Good evening, thank you all very much for attending. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of April 25th, 2018. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Happy Spring to everyone. I figure if we say it often enough, it will actually come true. Steve, for the folks at home. We have once again on the screen the agenda for tonight's meeting. You can take a look at what we'll be discussing and making decisions on perhaps this evening and decide how long you would like to stay with us. Okay, very good. Beginning tonight's meeting, we have a few announcements I'd like to let you know. We have a couple of informal information sessions that are scheduled with regard to a couple of initiatives that we're working on. The first is Upper Red Hook as part of our zoning update. We are looking at the business district there in Upper Red Hook between Spring Lake Road and Pitcher is the general vicinity. You know it as Cornucopia up to the storage unit. And so we'd like to schedule for Wednesday, May 2nd, up in that area at the New Beginnings Church, Wednesday, May 2nd, and that is at 7:00 PM. And it's an informal information session for anyone, first of all, but in particular the residents in Upper Red Hook around the hamlet and certainly within that business district. An opportunity for them to meet with our town planner and ask questions about the proposed changes. We also have another information session scheduled for that Friday, that's May 4th, at 6:30 here at Town Hall. And that is an update with our engineers and our rec department on the Rec Park West project. And folks will have an opportunity to see the latest iterations of the plan. As you know, the plan for that parcel was adopted back in 2013 and it's being tweaked right now to accommodate a field for individuals with special challenges and additional room for parking and buffer. So that is Friday, May 4th, 6:30 PM. We also want to let you know that there are many roads in the town of Red Hook where our speed limit signs are being changed. And if you have been following along, you've heard from us in the past that we are required by the state to change the speed limit signs to reflect the actual legal limit of the roads. We have many signs throughout our community that have illegal and improper signage. So we have undertaken over the last couple of years to make those changes, to comply with the law. And in particular, we'd like to let you know so that we can in fact go back to DOT and request speed limit reductions, legal speed limits, that we can enforce on our roadways to protect you and your neighbors from folks who are driving recklessly on the road. So you will see over the course of the next several weeks, these changes occurring on your roads and you will receive a communication from my office to that effect. And we will let you know that we will be making many speed limit requests to DOT. We've had some success already and you'll see the fruits of those labors on River Road and 9G coming up, hopefully within the next month or so. The last announcement I have is Apple Blossom Day. We'd like to remind you that's coming up, that's Saturday, May 12th. It begins at 10 o'clock here in the village and we hope that you will join us. We also have Arbor Day coming up in a few days here on the 28th. But if you're at home, that date is already passed. So those are the announcements that I had. Does anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make? Okay.
I was wondering, I know the Rec Park West neighbors had requested 10 days' notice. Has the notice for the May 4th been already gone out or when will it?
It's going out as we speak. Jackie is working on it and that was the only date that we could get the engineers here and have space. We have great difficulty in this Town Hall accommodating meetings of more than 10 people because we only have one space that can do that. So unfortunately, that is the date that we have and it's not quite 10, but nine days' notice.
And did you say what time it's at?
Yes, that is at 6:30 here at Town Hall, Red Park West. Okay. At this time, we'd like to accept some public comments and just a reminder, if you would address yourselves to the boards and we encourage you to limit your comments, if you could, to three minutes. Is there anybody else, anybody who would like to make some comments tonight? Okay, very good. All right, well, we have a fairly lengthy agenda and two presentations. So the first thing is pro forma order of business, which is that we are doing our annual paving project. And in order to protect your tax dollars, we go out to bid for all that work so that we get the best price possible. And so the first item on the agenda for the Town Board's consideration is a resolution to go out to bid for the paving of three roads. And I think at this time, we would like to take this opportunity to let you know and you'll be receiving a written communication as well if you live on one of these roads. But it's Kidd Lane, Sang Stack Lane, and Stony Brook Road. So basically, the roads surrounding the village of Tivoli. We'll be working on those roads which are badly in need of repaving. So we have in front of us, you perceive the notice of the public bids to go out for Kidd Lane approximately 5,755 feet, Sang Stack 3,144, and Stony Brook 4,752 feet in length. The bids to be opened approximately a month from now, May 24th. So we have resolution number?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, thank you Sue.
Sue, move.
Second.
I think some folks here recognize we're going to have a long evening tonight. So is there any further discussion about going out to bid for paving these three roads? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, good. We are onto our first presentation. This was a presentation requested by Bard College. And Jonathan, are you doing the presentation? Or are you doing it with someone?
Three of us are doing it. Bonnie Goode, Erin Canaan, and I.
Okay, very good. Well, all that sounds great. It all depends on me figuring out how to get the presentation up on the screen, which we think will happen.
Not from your email, it was from your download.
Yeah. Maybe we will get to it. Maybe.
There we go. It's right up there.
There we go.
Yeah. I'm ready.
Okay.
Success?
I think so.
Absolutely.
For me, this is a success.
I'm impressed. Good job, Professor. Good job. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. My name is Bonnie Goode and I'm the Associate Director of the Bard College Center for Civic Engagement. And I want to welcome you and I want to thank you. I get the honor and privilege of starting us off by talking about something that I think really shaped what we hope to discuss tonight, which is that we really believe that Bard and Red Hook have a strong partnership. And it's a strong partnership for the benefit of a strong community. So we want to talk about that tonight, what that looks like. At the Center for Civic Engagement, I think we strive to be a reflection of one of Bard's core institutional missions, which is that colleges and universities should be in the public interest and that the work that we're doing is for the benefit of our entire community as we move forward. And when we look tonight and we talk about that partnership, there's a couple of things that I hope that we'll be able to do together. One is that we'll be able to take a look at what that partnership looks like and how that actually plays out on a day-to-day basis. That maybe you'll understand a little bit more about how Bard is sort of an anchor institution in this community, that we're invested and committed by our mission, but also by the relationships that we have here. And that's an important part that forms what we do. And that we really think that Red Hook itself is a great incubator for student learning and for engagement in a community and that that's beneficial both to our students but also to the partner in the community that we're a part of. So we want to talk a little bit about what that looks like. So if I may have our next slide. So what I want to point out here, just a couple of things about what really demonstrates this partnership that we see on a regular basis. You know, this is a rural community by definition. And when you put that right next to Bard's sort of park-like campus, it's a wonderful complement together. And we think that that complementary relationship really enhances what we're able to do together. This community is a great place for our students, often to get jobs, part-time while they're students. After they leave, internships while they're here. And at the same time, Bard is a place that's a great employer for people who live in this community, many of us who are sitting right here and who treasure that outcome. We have diversity of our community members and perspectives. Community members here in Red Hook, students who come from all over the globe at Bard. They bring different perspectives, they have different experiences in their life, and that complements our community. Our partnership with our government, our town officials, I think really makes a difference in what we're able to accomplish together and especially to work together through differences and problems when they're encountered all the way around. But most importantly, I think that we have a deep commitment to a shared quality of life. I live here. Erin and Jonathan live here. And that commitment shapes everything that we do when we're working at Bard as well. So our next slide. So just to kind of point out what that means actually on a day-to-day basis, I just want to share a couple of things. These are some of the kinds of shared projects in our community that Bard and Red Hook committees, town officials, village officials, different people who make up this community have been working on, some of which are still ongoing projects. This is certainly does not shape our history, but we have all kinds of things that are happening right now as we know about trails that we're trying to connect our lovely villages, connect it to the town, connect it to our community. We're working on protecting our watershed, the Salt Hill Watershed Community Group, preservation efforts, historic preservation, beautiful Elmendorf Inn, Montgomery Place. There's so many different places that we treasure here. And I think it's that work that we do together that makes a huge difference. Recently, the Clean Energy Community status here. I know there's work towards the possibility of climate conservation. Many things that'll be ongoing. And this just is a taste of where we are. Our next slide. So one of the things that we get the pleasure of is every summer, we have students who come from all over the globe as part of a State Department-funded program. But they come here to study civic engagement and they're looking at this community, they're looking at what's happening at Bard. And the community members have been amazingly open to meeting and greeting. Many of the Town Board members have been here, as we can see, greeting our students. And residents within the community are housing them for overnight. So they have an experience of actually having a homestay in another country. And our last slide I want to point to, you know, other groups like the Rotary have been wonderful at welcoming our scholars who come from all over the world. So there's a nice connection with what they're doing on an international basis with these students that are there. So this is just a snapshot of what we're doing at this point, but there's a long history and there's a bright future. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Jonathan, who's going to talk a little bit about history and current.
So thanks, Bonnie. My name's Jonathan Becker. I'm the Director of the Center for Civic Engagement. The Town Board knows me because I brought my class here in, I think it was December. We saw a very lively Town Board meeting. I want to acknowledge some of the people in the audience from my, in addition to Bonnie Goode and Erin Canaan, we have Cammie Jones from the Center for Civic Engagement, Lisa Whalen for the Center for Civic Engagement, Bob Versi, who oversees the Fisher Center. We have, who else? Jim Brodbeck is Vice President for Administration, Bethany Nolgren, Dean of Students, Lori Huestead, who heads Sustainability, Karen Unger, who works the Development Office. A lot of people who are intimately involved in what Bard does in this community. So if people have questions, other people can step forward. I think what I want to talk about for a moment is a little bit, oh, next slide, sorry. So that I can, a little bit of how Bard conceptualizes itself in this community. So the Center for Civic Engagement was created seven years ago as a means of coordinating disparate activities from Bard College locally, nationally, and internationally. One of the interesting things that I discovered as we've been looking into Bard's past is our ideas are not anything new, right? So going back to Eleanor Roosevelt, she said Bard College is now making plans for increasing its usefulness, not only to its own students but to the community around it, which has shown so much loyalty and interest. She also said, "As far as Hudson and as far down as the Poughkeepsie, this is how it serves the people of the countryside. The professors make speeches at local club meetings. The people Bard College brought from the outside give lectures or perform music, created opportunities of interest for everyone." So going back, Bard has actually been engaged in this entire community. She also pointed out that the college was incredibly poor, that the community should band together to support it. But you know, certain stories, you have continuity over time. So a few, and we'll be moving a little more quickly, those of you who are worried we'll spend too much time here. Next slide, please. So, next slide, please. So the, you know, to describe some of our activities, you know, some of the biggest activities happen in the arts and this is, of course, the Fisher Center. Next slide, please. Next. So the Fisher Center has over 200 public events each year. And in the Summerscape Music Festival, which happened in the months of July and August, we have 80 events alone. Many people enjoy the Spiegel Tent. This looks like some people are having a great time there, I know. But it's also important to recognize that we host many local community organizations at the Fisher Center, more than 40 a year. And we're giving away more than 8,000 free tickets each year to local students and other people to attend events there. So one of the themes I want to stress, I know that this board and other boards here have heard about concern about people coming to Bard College. That's partly our fault. We own that. We want people to come to Bard. We want them to enjoy culture. We are an educational institution. We want people, not just our students, but members of this community. We have a number of members of the Lifetime Learning Institute here, which I'll talk about in a moment. We are opening our doors. And the mission of the Center for Civic Engagement is to open our doors, to bring people in and to send Bard people out, as in the day of Eleanor Roosevelt. Next slide, please. So you'll see, for example, I think one of my children is somewhere in there, the Red Hook Band performing at the Fisher Center. We don't have an auditorium, now we will someday. We'll still welcome the Red Hook Band at the Fisher Center, which is performing based on a subsidy of money we've raised independently. Next slide. And we have an incredibly open campus. There are more than 1,000 events each year held at Bard College that are free and open to the public. And those of you who don't know about these, you can read about them online. We have the website up there or just Google Bard College. We have three or four or five or six events each day. Next slide. So this is a great event, Bard and West Point. Each year, we have a public debate with West Point. We have mixed teams. This was a great one, where a West Point faculty member, West Point cadets, and Bard students debated Bard faculty, Bard students, and West Point cadets at the same time on the subject of drones. This event, as in many others, again, is free and open to the public. Next. Montgomery Place, we've opened up now with a series of public lectures that are happening this fall. This fall's theme is Montgomery Place, A Window on the World, Alexander Jackson Davis, Architecture and Design. Next. We open it up to local community organizations. So the Red Hook Education Foundation has helped numerous fundraisers at Bard College. And here we have the Superintendent of Red Hook Schools receiving a $3,500 check.
Million, three million.
Three, excuse me.
That's a big difference, John.
$3.5 trillion check. You let him take that? I hope it's still the Spiegel Tent. All right, Paul Finch is doing really well. Next slide.
I have a cake allocation.
And now we get to the Lifetime Learning Institute. Again, Bard is built on a belief in education. And one of the communities we serve are mature students in the Hudson Valley. My parents are in the audience, they are mature students. So I think that's the right terminology. Next slide. You know, LLI alone is holding 64 classes this year. Next slide. And has 300 members. And through negotiations with them, we've expanded their opportunities to not just come on Fridays, which they have traditionally done, but to offer Saturday classes and summer classes. Again, for us, it's about mission and accessibility and education. Next slide, please. I'm going to transition, actually, we're going to go back and forth to Erin Canaan, who will talk about our students, who are our greatest resource.
Oh, I thought you were going to do a formal transition.
No.
Excellent. So my name is Erin Canaan and I've been at Bard for 22 years. I moved here, I'm almost at the point in my life where I've lived here longer than I had yours before I moved here. So I'm not sure if that makes me from Red Hook or not, but my children are from Red Hook. Born and bred and they, I have a 15-year-old and an 11-year-old. So one of the things when I was reflecting on what this community needs and what we can bring to the community, both as a parent and as somebody who works at the college, I was thinking that one of the things that Red Hook has in spades as a natural resource is young people. So we have, education is one of the biggest economic drivers in our town and it's the biggest industry and it's an incredible resource. So I wanted to think about our young people as a resource to all of us and how we can act as a resource to them and how they can act as a resource to us. And we go to the incubator theme. And I think in some of our actual events, incubators may have been used at some point. That's in the science section later. But we have a lot of formalized programs where students are being taught something. We have formal programs where students are teachers, like in the MAT program, where they're going actually into our classrooms and learning how to teach in our local school districts. But something that we've had around for about 20 years is the TLS Office. We like acronyms at Bard and so the TLS Office is the Trustee Leader Scholarship Program. And these are some of the student-led initiatives. I'm not going to go through the list with you. You'll see some places that, Astor Home, for instance, is a place where students have organized a project there for well over 15 years. The Community Expressive Arts Project is a roving project that's worked in many of the local community partners for, again, close to 15 years. We have Building Up Hudson and Culture Connect, where students have been working close to 10. Of the 12 here listed, eight of these projects have been going on for more than five years. So that means students have graduated and they've passed their project on to someone else. So leadership in the community, where students are developing their own ideas, they're reaching out to community organizations. And then they're recruiting students as volunteers to come in and do different things like teaching English language instruction, doing science outreach, mentoring, doing math circle, things of that nature. One of the student-led projects that emerged from this office is La Vos. And it is the, it's a great way in which we've been able to expand our reach throughout the Hudson Valley. It started as a student-led project. It's the largest Spanish news source in the Hudson Valley. Bard students write and edit for this, in addition to having an executive director who's a professional, who's a professional reporter. But there are community members and there are other students from other schools in the local community who can also write and edit for this newspaper. And there's a new Spanish radio in Kingston. And so that is another place where local folks and students, our young people, can get some more experience doing media. Next, please. Debate and Model UN. So since 2012, we've had more than 600 middle and high school students participate in both of these programs. I don't think there's another project that is as reciprocal in, from student to student, where students are really organizing this with other high school students, both Model UN and debate tournaments. So pictures of children are our natural resource. There might be a couple of Bard parent kids in some of these pictures. This is UN, where we have over 200 participants come for a simulation. And again, it's high school students working with college students directly. So you'll see them working together. Science outreach. So about seven years ago, we added a requirement for our first-year students, where they have to come back early to campus in January. So they're the only students on campus at the time. And they're taking a class called Citizen Science. It's a three-week science course. And during that time, one of the things that we wanted to incorporate into this is an engagement piece. So we have all of our first-year students trained to do science outreach activities with six school districts, including Red Hook. Each year, we reach about 3,000 local schoolchildren, grades K to 8. And this is where I was going to make my incubator joke, where there's literal incubators sometimes with our STEM. This project has actually turned into a year-round program. We have two to three science or math activities in the local community, most of them in Red Hook, every week for the whole year. And there's going to be one tomorrow night. They're often in the libraries, the community center, the schools. We also have summer camps, free summer camps. This was actually an idea that was started by an alum, he's an alum now, but he went, he was a first-year student participating in Citizen Science. He is now in a PhD program in biology. He was a pro, he went to one of these, I think he went to Mill Road, actually. And he was there doing some, what he thought was a pretty easy experiment that had like vinegar and baking soda or something. And he didn't understand the chemistry. And one of the kids asked him a question and he was, you know, a little nervous about not knowing the answer. So he ran home and it was the first thing he did when he got back to his dorm room. He then worked for me for the next three years as a science outreach coordinator. And one of the things he had was an idea to run these summer library programs. So he started in Red Hook Library. He ran five weeks' worth of summer camps free each summer that he was here. He graduated and then he was hired at the Red Hook Library. And he stayed on for a whole nother year before he went on to a PhD program in science. So that's the kind of natural resource that I'm talking about. And we're seeing actually more and more of that, where students are seeing Red Hook as a place to which they can stay and where their kind of innovative ideas can be used. Next slide, please. So this is just some of the fun that we have. You'll see the intensity to which some of the students are looking at, like what is going on? The Red Hook High School comes for a day in the life of the Hudson, right at the Salt Hill on campus. Excellent. And this is in the Tivoli Library. I think this happened this semester. This is STEAM, so you add art to the whole STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So speaking of science, sustainability. We share leadership. There's some leadership in the room here that has had a hand in some of the sustainability work that we've been doing. But many Bard staff and faculty are committed to volunteerism in their community. And this is an example of cooperation between Bard, Red Hook, and various volunteers in both communities. And this is the 350 movement that took place a few years back, where we had a number of events in the local community throughout the year. Math and science outreach. We have a girls' math Olympia, which drew 100 students to Bard. We have students participating in the American Mathematics Competitions on campus. And just last week, 60 students participated in a girls' adventure math competition. And there are four of them. So another little-known fact is that Martin Luther King Jr. received an honorary degree back in 1962 from Bard. And we, as part of our Citizen Science program when we started, decided that we needed to orient students to a sense of place in Red Hook. So we have our students arrive in August. They do a three-week intensive writing program called Language and Thinking, and then they do a semester's worth of work. And they, it takes a lot to adjust to college, we know that. So in January, we've taken this as an opportunity during the Citizen Science program to introduce students, reintroduce students to the local community. So we have a day, an MLK Day of Engagement on the weekend of MLK, so the National Day of Service. This is how we honor MLK's legacy. And we have about three hundred students go out to over twenty-five sites on the Day of Engagement, and they're first-year students. And we talk with them afterwards in a reflecting, during a reflection time, about what it means to be in a place, and what it means, and how that can shape their experience at Bard. And one of those sites is right in our own recycling center, where we do an e-waste drive with many of the people in the room, even if it's cold. We show up snow or blizzard. And I think we've had a blizzard. This is making bluebird, bluebird houses. In the shop, we, Lori got a little nervous when we made these, because then we realized we actually have to take care of what happens in there. So now there's like bluebird monitoring going on. So that's an extended, an unexpected but pleasurable extended project that we started in January. Next.
So we're going to swap one more time, we're almost... So one of the other really exciting things that we've been doing is having college classes, what we call Engage with our Arts and Science classes, where students are not only studying in the classroom, but they're studying in the community around them and impacting the community around them. One of the ways in which, when my students were gathered here in the fall, it was because they were taking a class called All Politics is Local. So they were here, they were in the Red Hook Village Board, they were in the local court, seeing how that operates. They were in the Tivoli Board and so forth. And these students are not only expected to study, but they're doing projects in their local communities. Next, please. So some of the types of projects we've had include making textbooks for, on conservation biology, or students in a class on water, teaching about ocean circulation in the local Red Hook schools. Next, please. One of my favorite projects was a Tivoli Renters Handbook. Now, there's a lot of complaints about Bard students in Tivoli, but Bard students also have complaints about landlords occasionally. So a student and the mayor got together and prepared a document about rights and responsibilities of student renters in Tivoli. Next, please. Here is one of my favorite students, Tierney Wiremather, I think is the pronunciation, who worked on the septic management within the village of Red Hook, which those of us, the town of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook, so those of us who live here know that there's nothing more important to the center of town than septic management.
Busters.
Very well met, project. Next slide. And here's a public art project in the Red Hook Village Green from the Sculptor Two class, which is called Sight and Specific. And the students learned the process of how do you get approval to show art publicly, right? And then they showed art publicly, and the whole community benefited. Next slide. And here's a class I had on voting and elections. Let me say, one of the things about the Engage with our Arts and Sciences classes is we bring in people to Bard as well. So everyone from John Faso to Mark Molinaro to Chris Munn to Warren Sheppard, to a variety of people that have come to class and spoken to the classes to learn about local politics and to learn about who is running for office. In this case, actually, students were trained as poll workers, which are needed actually in Hudson Valley. And they got to actually work in the polls on polling day and learn really about the polling process. So one other big area that Bard's involved with, returning from students back to community, is to talk about Bard athletics. The Bard Gym is a really active place for the community. Again, oh my god, we... It's okay.
How can it live with a presentation that doesn't have a problem?
Exactly. So we, we have about five hundred community members who are members of the Bard Gym, who have community memberships, that's in addition to the faculty and staff. We have events which draw between five hundred and two, when we have basketball tournaments, two thousand local spectators to see Ryan Beck play Red Hook and others be involved with there. And in the summers, anyone who's had children in Red Hook, we have about six hundred local area kids participate in summer camps at Bard. Next slide, please. We have, that's a Red Hook Ryan Beck soccer game, wrestling matches. There we have the Bard Gym, you can see we have instructional classes. Jim Brudnik back there is in the spinning room all the time. Other people are on the workout machines. And what's important also is we try to, would you guess that eighteen and a half percent of Bard students are varsity athletes? Right? It is not the same Bard as when Eleanor Roosevelt was here, I don't think. And we also expect community involvement. So this year, around three hundred varsity athletes will participate in programs to support Special Olympics. Cami Jonesen is in the back, is working with them. Next slide. Special Olympic activity is taking place, next slide, please. There, we have to put in Bard beat faster and money raising. I think it was about three to one in terms of money raising for the Special Olympics. So again, even amongst different cohorts of our student body, we believe that engaging with the community is really important. Next slide. So the other issue about Bard, which is not, which I think is worth mentioning, is the economic impact. Next, please. So a two thousand and fifteen study by the Commission of Independent Colleges and Universities estimated the impact of Bard at nearly four hundred million dollars in the local community. Campus visitors alone is thirty million dollars. All right, so we are not simply a civically engaged hub of this community, we are an economic hub of this community. Next, please. The Fisher Center, which Bob Bursey oversees, has about fifty thousand visitors a year, twenty thousand of whom are from Duchess County alone, and others from the region, bringing people to this area who are, who are going to local businesses, local restaurants, renting rooms and hotels, and keeping the community thriving. Next slide, please. And the Fisher, you know, Center itself generated about four million dollars in revenue for the local, in event area commerce in the last year, two thousand and seventeen. Next slide, please. You know, the other thing is, we are an educational institution. And one of the difficult things about working at Bard occasionally is, for every one thing we get, we occasionally get sort of the complaint, right? Eight twenty-year-old did something I don't like, right? Which is shocking, I have an eighteen-year-old, he occasionally does something I don't like, right? So, you know, in the various complaints we got, we got one recently, which was like, Bard College is an elitist institution, blah, blah, blah. Not true. You know, about seventy percent of students at Bard are on financial aid. Pell eligibility, which is a standard for financial need, we have a larger percentage of Pell-eligible students than do Princeton, Harvard, or Stanford, right? We have a huge number of students who are tremendously needy, and yet who we work to find opportunities to engage with their community. And that's just speaking in Etta Dale. One thing this community may not know is we have nine early colleges across the country in places like New York City, Cleveland, Baltimore, New Orleans. And if you add those on, they're Bard students, they're getting free public Bard associates degrees, where about forty percent Pell-eligible, all right? Which is incomparable amongst higher educational institutions in the United States. Next slide, please. We also have fifteen Bridge Student Semester, that's people from the Hudson Valley who are coming to study at Bard for a very nominal fee. Next slide. And in sixteen seventeen, we gave three and a half million dollars of aid to a hundred and sixty-two students coming from the Hudson Valley. Next slide, please. So I want to conclude about the campus itself, all right? Which is open to the public. We have nine hundred and thirty acres of arboretum, which is open to the public. Next slide, please. And here you see our nursery school on Celebrating the Tree Campus USA, which Bard College is one. Continue, please. There's a beautiful overhead view of the campus. Next, Blithe Wood Gardens, which I hope many, most, or everyone here has been to. Next slide, please. Montgomery Place, which we acquired a couple of years ago, and which we're holding a series of public events, as you've seen earlier. Next slide, please. And here we go, prom, right? What prom would be complete in Red Hook without people coming to take photos at Blithe Wood before and coming to the Bard Gym after? In sum, you know, it is difficult, there are many colleges and universities. I go across the world, actually, not just the country, but the world, talking about colleges and universities. And for an eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-student undergraduate institution, we make a conscious effort to engage with this community, of which we are, most of us are members. And we believe that the benefits of this engagement are a real value to Bard and the community. We think people, it's difficult for people to understand the scope and breadth of what we're doing, and we're really proud to be members of this community. So we thank you for your time and listening to us, we're happy to answer any questions. But I hope that the people here at least have gotten a better sense of the scope, breadth, and depth of not just the institution's efforts, but the wonderful efforts of our students who are really committed to being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan, thank you, Erin, Bonnie, and the rest of you folks for showing up. You offered to take questions, and it looks like you at least have one.
Great, please. Lindt Keely, I remember.
Eleanor Roosevelt would be very disappointed to find out that her husband Franklin didn't have the accessibility, the word you mentioned, for the seniors in that campus. I read your master plan, and only on page ninety-three and ninety-five was there any even slight mention of accessibility to those that are in wheelchairs, be it the public, students, professor. So I think this is an area that you need improvement.
Thank you. So I, the question, sorry. So I don't deal with the master plan, the question is about Bard accessibility in the master plan. I will say that accessibility to people with physical challenges, right? So I will say that we do have students who have physical challenges. We comply with all ADA rules and regulations. All of our new buildings are extremely accessible. We do face a challenge, as many places do, that we're a hundred and fifty-seven-year-old institution, and not all is easily adapted, right? But even some of the efforts we want to make, like Montgomery Place, the question is, how do you make that accessible and honor historic values? So I think as an institution, we have a disability office. We take these issues very seriously. The students I know, and the, we have, you know, Jill Lundquist here, who is one of the LLI board members, and also is a board member of CCE. Many of the LLI board, some of the LLI people face, you know, challenges with mobility, and we try to accommodate them as best we can. I think, you know, maybe the page numbering isn't reflective of the priority, but we do welcome students with a variety of disabilities onto campus, including mobility. And we will discuss and look and see. I'm not sure if it's about the patination, right, or the priority, but I know institutionally it's a significant problem.
Also, you didn't have any pictures of a person in a wheelchair in that master plan, which I thought, not good.
I'll talk to the, I actually, I'm ashamed to admit, haven't read our master plan. So I'm too busy promoting, you know, things in Bard and the area, but we'll review that. Thanks for the suggestion.
I have a brief story to tell. I was taking, having dinner with my grandson, who lives in Brooklyn, in the Trig Haven, a year or so ago. And the waitress, there's a waitress taking care of us, and she was being a little coy with him. And finally, she said, weren't we in the same eighth grade together? And they, they were. He lives in, he lives in Brooklyn, was going to Brooklyn College at the time, and she was going to Bard.
I mean, I...
Actually, that happened twice with, with his brother.
It's interesting, I want to say, with the growth in athletics at Bard, there's even more people from the Hudson Valley coming to the institution, which is, you know, interesting in its own right.
Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to say, I saw a lot of myself and my family in the presentation. We've, almost every section, we've participated in those things. And none of us are affiliated with Bard, and so we really feel as a family, and I think I speak for my peer group who has young children in Red Hook. You know, we feel that investment and that, you know, the availability of resources and everything from the cultural stuff to the science and just the open campus. And so I really appreciate your presentation, because I think you covered, you know, a lot of what a lot of people here, a lot of families feel and know is the case, that you're so well-invested here, so. I was wondering if we could maybe put the presentation on our website? Do you think that would be possible? I'm hopeful that it looks...
If it doesn't crash it, you...
Yeah, it's a future, so. You may know that we're redoing our website, and I want to make sure that kind of material is on now, because then it will get migrated over and we'll have like an Explore Red Hook section. And I think Bard should have a really significant presence there, and I want to make sure things like this are on there for visitors and other people.
I just wanted to add, we did have one more slide that was about a what's next. So the question is, you know, ending it not on the note of like, oh, we're open and great, but questions of what are the areas where we need to continue dialogue conversation? And where can we deepen our partnerships in order to do more harnessing of the resources? Because I think as we look sort of to the future for our children, for the college students who are here, and also for our own future in terms of technology and the impacts it's going to have on things like the economy and jobs, and what, I think flexibility, innovation, creativity are all going to be really necessary. And so I think the more we can sort of explore ways that we can deepen what we have now, which I would say, I would argue probably ten or twelve years ago wasn't quite as connected, that, you know, what do we do next, where should we go? And we would look really to you all for that guidance, so I just wanted to add that a little bit.
And one more thing, if I can, sorry, that the, the, one of the students in the All Politics Local class has helped develop the social media policy for the town of Red Hook. And I'm sure you'll find other student intern volunteers willing to help you with your website development.
So the more I...
Free and cheap labor is something we enjoy. Hank, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Another item of cooperation. Back in the eighties, the town incorporated a water district, limited acres, et cetera. And we were going to build a water tower, and a couple of guys talked with people at Bard, and Bard paid for half of that big green water tower. Now, out of the goodness of the tar, because it really needed that storage, and it has used the water significantly in a number of years. But it's a, it's a neat little item of cooperation.
Right, good, well, thank you all very much. I think I speak for many of us up here when I say that we're very appreciative of you coming here to make the presentation. But certainly, we recognize your contributions to this community and to the community at large. As I like to say, you're the little college that has a big impact. And I think we're very proud that you're in our community. And so if there's, you know, things that we can do to assist you, please feel free to reach out to us as well. Thank you again for your presentation. And we will get on to an even more exciting topic now, which is water. We all need it, but...
That was illegal, wasn't it?
Thank you again, all of you, for joining us. Okay, Hank?
Yeah.
You all set?
Yeah, I am.
You've, you've got your, your visuals?
I do not, I'm a technical dinosaur, so I think I'll just get over to this side of the room so I can talk to the whole room. And we'll review the, our annual report.
Okay.
And you all have copies.
Okay, Steve, can you capture this audio from that far away? You're good?
Okay.
Thank you. You're good to go as soon as the masses migrate.
Okay. Well, we'll start anyway.
Yeah.
Same format as usual, who we are, what we've done, what we plan to do, and then some financial introduction considerations. Who we are. The Water Board. We added two members this year, we dropped two. Anne Ruben had not attended any meetings, perhaps not because of lack of interest, I'm sure she didn't, but perhaps she just didn't have time. And Dick Franklin is just no longer able to get out evenings and go meeting in here. So luckily, we had two volunteers. One of Sarah's neighbors, and another young fellow. He grew up in Red Hook, went to school in Red Hook, and he lives on Calley Road. So Albin Amrod is one, he's an engineer.
Mike.
Michael, Michael Roemberg. I have these senior moments. Anyway, and Mike is, has a good background in finance, especially, particularly with water systems. Two good additions, they were, attended a meeting just to introduce them to who we are and what we're doing. And then they came to the next meeting, last meeting, and they're, they contribute, they're interactive, they're good people. The rest, the operations personnel. We hire a company called BRI. And I don't have the definition of the BRI, but in BRI, Environmental Services, they're out of La Grange, and they operate a number of systems in the county and beyond. They were operating the... They were operating the Fetches County Water and Wastewater Systems, but they had no disagreements, so they dropped out of there. But anyway, they've been with us five or six years and we've renewed their contract three times. The operator manager is Fernando Dango. He lives in Red Hook and in the village. And he recently picked up responsibility for the village of Red Hook. The village was having trouble, needed some oversight and he's doing that, they're doing it. Carol and I run, manage the office. Billing is accomplished by Carol. We have meter readers, three meter readers, Cynthia Fields, Mark Rowe and Chris Gifford. And we have to replace Mark Rowe after June. So if anybody know, know retired person or even a young retired person who likes to pick up two, three hundred dollars every quarter for a couple of days' work, point it to us. Revenue collection is Mrs. Sue McCann. Okay. Two thousand seventeen highlights. We upgraded our pump control. We had been having trouble with the circuit breakers and various elements in the power system. We had burned wires and blown circuit breakers. Anyway, so we decided to upgrade the, those power controls. We went out to bid, we got only one bid back, one proposal. It was more money than we thought we should have, than legally we could pay because we hadn't gone out for a formal bid. We just solicited some proposals. Anyway, so we finally got that system installed in January of this year. And we immediately had some unrelated, but nevertheless complimentary problems. We had, lost communication from our tower to the tank. So we didn't, the pumps didn't know when to turn on at all. We'd had that problem last summer, had it fixed, but this January, they needed to realign the antennas, they hadn't realigned the antennas proper. So got that done. Then we had a problem with wires from the variable frequency drive control units to the wells. These things convert sixty cycle power to DC power and then convert that direct current stuff to variable frequencies. But these frequencies that are generated are not like the nice clean sixty cycle power we get over from central Hudson. They have many, many harmonics, ultra-associated frequencies, requiring, causing problems with normal wires and therefore we had to replace wires from the pump house to the wells, another ten thousand dollars, but we had to do it. Then we had a short in the pump motor for well two, so we had to take that offline. And while that pump was pulled, we did get a couple of other things done. That well needed rehabilitation, we were planning to do it this year and Henry Boyd did the rehab while the pump was pulled. And he also put in a probe for our well level monitoring, which we've been meaning to do. But he couldn't test that pump because that variable frequency drive developed a problem, perhaps related to the short in the motor. Turns out the vernacular is, it's fried. So they had to be pulled and sent back-
That sounds expensive.
Pardon?
That sounds expensive.
Oh yeah, it's ruined. The question was, would the warranty cover? You know, the, you could say that there wasn't a problem with variable frequency drive that was caused by the short in the motor. However, I talked with Jim Black today. He's the contractor that won the job and installed the system, the controls. He said it is covered under warranty, so that's good. Now, what has to happen next is they have to, his guys have to reinstall that DFD. We've got to have Henry Boyd come, put the pump in, hook up the pump, test, make sure it's working properly and then put it online. So we had, there's a little bit of coordination involved in getting people together. He's going to be working with Fernando to line things up. But it was good news that the, that the control is covered by the warranty. Just as an aside, I was relatively, am relatively disappointed with the engineering support for Crawford. Didn't like the original analysis they did, I thought it was very superficial. The request for proposal was instead of writing a spec and looking for a response, it was essentially, here's our requirements. See, you know, make us a proposal for satisfying these requirements, which may be why we, one of the reasons we only got one bid. You know, people maybe don't want to spend that time. Easier to just fulfill a list of specification. Anyway, then the other thing was this wiring to the pumps. That's very common, well-known to people in the business, that you do need that special wire. So again, that wasn't identified as a, as some of the work that should be done. Wanted to be another ten thousand dollars. Not that it would have been done for nothing, you know, with the rest of the work, but it was just an extra problem. So I was not very, not very satisfied. I guess that's about it. Storage tank, the storage tank was inspected in July and there are a number of problems that should address. The question is, should we do any work on that tank in terms of rehabbing if we're going to replace it? So Tiger and Bond was engaged to do a study for us. Should we consider, should, what's the recommendation? Should we rehab, repaint or build a new tank? We got that, the results of that study and I'll discuss it briefly with you after this status report. Just in summary, they recommend that we rehab the tank. So we've had water meter problems, only five, but nevertheless, we put in, we had to buy new meters. We could no longer get the old meter, the ones we had by use. A new meter is required a probe. You can't read the numbers, so you have to use a probe. That was about a seven or eight hundred dollar probe. And the problem is, they then changed the meters such that the probe no longer works. So we should have been getting, I understand they were going to come up with a new probe this month. We'll find out if they admit it or not. In the meantime, we're estimating, they're all, happen to be low-use customers, so we can estimate the usage. They're probably getting minimal bills anyway. Okay. We did institute another ten percent increase in our water rates effective March of seventeen and maybe we should do another one. That's another, you know, if we consider either, either approach, either rehabbing the tank or replacing it, we're going to need more money. We want to build up some reserves and so we probably should do another increase for next year. And maybe we should do consistently. Go ahead and a lot of companies are doing this now. They do a small increase every year. So it's not a big deal to people, they know it's happening and we should probably consider that.
You mean like another ten percent?
Ten or less, maybe five, six, seven, whatever, you know. But they would still be the lowest rates around for several years, so. Okay, our annual inspection. Oh, first of all, these are the water quality, okay. Our tests are always good, we have no problems. Just so lucky, we have good water, great water. And the other thing is, the operators are good about doing them promptly and doing the sampling properly, et cetera. When Fernando took over the village, there was, had been problems with doing the sampling. So anyway, that's always good, we're lucky. The annual inspection, the health department engineer comes supposedly every year. Some years he skips, but he came again last year. We usually get a good rating and again this year, he found a few problems related to piping in the vault, but the storage tower needs to be repainted. So we'll do that, but that's kind of a minor problem. Okay, this year, we'll continue to monitor production, quality and operations. Move on to update our well level monitoring. As I mentioned, we did have one probe inserted. We have to pull the pump to insert that probe and so we'll have one pump to pull and insert another probe for that well and then we'll have to have corresponding circuitry in the control panel. Rehab well two, well that happened to get done. We would have done it later this year probably, but it was done as part of the issue, motor problem. Storage tank, you said, as I mentioned, we had a response from Tiger and Bond and we'll do our normal testing. Future considerations, again, the storage tank and another rate increase. Revenue. Our operating income was about the same. In spite of the water, the increased rate, people have been using less water. Our annual gallons built is less than it has been, not much, not much less, but less than in the last few years. Some miscellaneous income, got some interest for a change. So a total revenue of a hundred, roughly a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And our expenses were a little low this year, but we had expected to pay that pump control update this year and, or last year. And the bill actually came in this year, so we've paid it for two thousand eighteen. So we're a little low on expenses relative to past few years, but that's just because of the late payment of the pump control. Okay. Our reserve status. We mentioned that both Glenn Amrod and Mike were very impressed with the fact that we have sizable reserves. Most water systems do not. And one of the things they mentioned is most municipal systems, in spite of the fact that they should keep the water revenue separate, they don't. And the water revenue goes into the general fund and, you know, there's no specific finding and accounting for water revenue. So we have, we haven't added to these reserves. We've had other expenses and currently that unreserved balance, at the time I put this together, was, we had seventy thousand dollars in there and sometime later I saw another report that said ninety thousand, but that's a fluctuating, not a reserve. It's a bucket that, to which our revenue flows and our expenses come out. So the amount of money in there varies, but we did have plenty to cover the pump control and I owe these additional expenses as well. I know we do, but it means that we won't have as much to put in reserves as I would like. Okay. Operations summary. Last year, we pumped a lot more than we built. Big reason for that was in the summer, we lost our communications from the tank to the storage tank to the pumps. So we operate the pumps manually and overpumped. You know, the tank overflowed just because we couldn't, we weren't aware of how full it was, so we just pumped extra to be sure that we had enough. And so our pump to build ratio dropped from our normal of around ninety percent, but it, there's a good reason for it. So that's the, any questions on the annual report?
I just wondered if you have any theories about why people are using less water? Is it, maybe people have more efficient appliances? I mean, I see, it's not, it's not like it's that much less, but it's, it is something. So, I mean, do you have any theories?
People may be being a little more careful, you know, more conscious, turning the water off.
Pure showers.
Washing their teeth, things like that, you know.
Sure, okay. Thinking of high efficiency appliances or something.
Yeah, I think all of those things.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Hank, we had two wells, three.
Two.
Two.
Two. Currently, we're not comfortable operating with one well, but we didn't have much choice.
You don't need more than two?
Oh, no, no, we don't even, we don't even need two, except for backup.
Okay.
Because when Bard College was using our water full-time back in two thousand and ten, instead of a hundred thousand or eighty or ninety thousand gallons a day, we were pumping and then high two hundreds, sometimes close to three hundred thousand gallons a day. We did that with one pump, pumping less than twenty-four hours a day. So we're in good shape, capacity-wise. Okay. I think you've maybe taken a quick look at the summary of the Tiger and Bond report. Then that is, it looks like considerable savings if we rehabilitate them now. I have a few questions. I don't think enough to change the real, the output, I mean, the result. For example, if we're going to build a new tank, we wouldn't do it next year. We'd probably wait at least ten years before we have to invest that money. How big a difference is that? I don't know. Might be some. The other thing is, if we, they're using the cost, the forty and sixty-year cost, they're using the repaint estimate, not rehabilitation. We will have, you know, it's an old tank, even if we repaint it. So we will have repairs and rehabilitation work to do and they didn't address that in their estimate.
And Hank, if I could just add to that, you and I have discussed and I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that, you know, one of the things that was difficult to try to comprehend is the estimate that they use here for recoding from now on, three point four four, a summary there. If you look at the third line down, recoding twenty-year cycle.
Yeah.
You and I have discussed this with the board, you know, just to make them aware that part of their argument is that it would be cheaper because recoding every twenty years costs X amount of dollars and I don't know how realistic that is to make an assumption that sixty years from now, recoding a giant tank is going to be the same cost that it is today.
They make a point in here that the paint that was used in the estimate by Pittsburgh Tank is not as good, as resilient as they would like. Better paint, kind of paint they would recommend would probably be, cost us another fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. No. So that's, adds a little more to the rehab.
So the paint may be additional cost and the fact that it's, I just don't know that it's realistic
Well.
to expect that sixty years from now, repainting a tank is going to cost the same amount of money.
Well, no. They didn't anticipate inflation. They used this present worth, present, whatever, something present worth, which all it says is, we're using constant dollars, today's dollars. So it, that lack of inflationary consideration affects the other, the other estimate as well.
Although there is no rehabbing-
Minimal rehab, yes.
To, to the glass, so in a way, there's more predictability with the costs going forward.
There it is. You know, I was thinking, it's not, the analogy is not perfect, but it's kind of like, should I fix up my old car and keep it or buy a new car? You know? Probably most, in most cases, would be financially better off keeping the old car, fixing it up, backing up models and everything else. But it's comforting to buy the new car and not have any worries.
Right.
So it's kind of a comparable decision relative to the painting cycle estimate. I talked with a guy from New York Rural Water today. Again, I had called earlier and we hadn't connected, but has, was it, I asked him, is the twenty-year life expectancy reasonable? And he said, yeah, you know, and it is. But his, his point was- But his, his point was the finishes, the paints today are excellent. But when you get into a tank that's years old and gets rust and stuff, the problem is getting the surfaces clean and smooth such that the paint will adhere. You know, if there's too much rust, you just, sanding just doesn't cut it. So a lot depends on how well they prepare the surface. Just maybe, maybe weather could even, you know, affect. So, so and another case in, in their report, they mentioned the lifetime, he says fifteen to twenty years. They use twenty in their estimates. I hope to get comments from the water board and maybe we'll meet next week and discuss this. I would hope to have a recommendation for the town board, at least, you know, by the end of May, middle of May hopefully.
There would be a disruption each time we rehabbed.
Oh, sure, a major, major disruption. Because you have to bring in a temporary tank, some sort of a using air pressure pneumatic tank. So we pump, maybe have the tank up on the hill, pump water to it and have a, an air compressor up there pumping air into it to help provide pressure, because you wouldn't have the height of the tank to give you pressure throughout the district. So, and the other, that's another thing that we have to do and maybe we should also anyway, is have a generator. If you don't have storage, well, you have to have a generator. Because anytime you lose power, have a problem, you just need a generator.
Hank, Hank and I discussed, you know, at this last winter storm, we were without power for up to six days in many locations. And in the site of our water facilities, we were down for several days.
Three days, yeah.
So it's important that we, you know, secure our resource for our residents in that district.
Yeah, we should do it.
Yeah.
It just hasn't bubbled up to the top. Probably be a, a blend is, it works with water systems and he, on top of his head, he said it's probably a twenty-five thousand dollar investment. For a generator.
Seems like it might be a good investment to know that the
Yeah.
power's gonna go on.
Yeah. There are a lot of good investments.
Yeah.
So you have the, the detail of the, oh, they have, they look at three scenarios. The elevated tank is really not of interest. It's, it's built on a pedestal. You've seen a lot of the village of Red Hook, in fact, Village of Tivoli, they're pedestal towers. I think we like the stand pipe because the water is available all the way down to the bottom. You have more water, you have less problem with stale stagnant water, but we've never had a problem, you know, so. Why? I don't know.
Don't mess with, don't mess with success.
You're right.
Good engineering term.
Well, I think about these adages when we think about our power control upgrade. One of them is if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Right.
But in this case, in a situation with the water company, we can't wait till it's broken.
No, no.
So the other one is no good deed goes unpunished. Anyway. Too often those old adages, you find out why they're old adages.
They're meaningful.
Yeah. So, any questions?
Does Bard still contribute financially?
No, their contribution was half the cost of the tank. Now, a few years ago when we talked, I was looking into repainting and wondered if Bard was to contribute to the repainting. However, the agreement that was entered into between Bard and the town leaves Bard off the hook for maintenance. Maintenance is the town, is the water district responsibility according to that agreement. I don't like that. I don't think it's right.
But they do pay for their water.
Oh, they do pay for their water.
And they, and they pay more than it costs us to provide it, so.
Oh, yeah, one, the thing is, they're not using much.
I know, I realize that.
Do they, do they experience water rate increases when everybody else does?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They, they've come through several times looking for a better rate. That just makes sense. Back to us.
Hank, as a member of the water district, I want to thank you because the water's been great. I wanted to mention, I know Carol is retiring this year, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So one of the features of our new website will be the potential for some online billing possibility for things like the water system. So I just, I floated that with Carol before. I don't know if she shared that with you when we were doing our website meetings, but it's something to think about when you're hiring your new secretary. Just the thought that having somebody who's at least comfortable with the concept, they, they probably wouldn't have to actually be involved in any of the actual website stuff. But it's a, it's a possible service that we could be providing to district members who would like to be able to pay online. That would be fairly painless once we have the website up and running. So it's just, I'm just floating it to you as something to think about.
We'll have to get Sue McKen on board.
Sure, okay, I'll work on Sue. But when you, as you're hiring your secretary, it's just something to keep in the back of your mind that if it's somebody who is at least comfortable with the idea that that may happen down the road, it wouldn't be right away, it wouldn't be overnight, but you know, it, it might be something good for them to be at least aware of.
It's probably more likely if and when we go to an automated meter reading system. The software would have to be up there, upgraded for that.
Yeah.
New, totally new system. And they might have features that never act with.
What software do you use right now?
It's produced by.
Is the SCA water shop, okay.
Yeah. It was developed by them and it's maintained by them.
Okay.
Jay Greenblatt.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So we're not anxious to move because number of people on the water board have been involved with technology upgrades. The trouble is, once you make that move, you're locked in. Every time the technology changes.
Sure. So the website would actually work with the SCA software, so it's not actually a different thing. It's something we'd already be paying for as a town.
Yeah.
That's a capability that we can add.
We'll have to look into it, sure.
It's basically just the literal webpage and the processing of the payment. It's not anything to do with actual billing.
Okay.
So it makes sense. So anyway, we'll talk, we can talk about the
No, it doesn't make sense to me.
The back, background stuff, but um.
I'm a dinosaur.
And I don't even know, maybe it has something to do with what your secretary would need to do, you know, if, if she's doing the billing, but not the what, you know, the payment processing.
Well, we'll have to look into it, sure.
If that's something Sue does, then that's separate, but anyway, just bringing that to your attention.
Hank, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you very much for, we don't want to say how many years that you've been
No, we don't want to talk about that.
steering us with this very important resource, so we appreciate it. And you'll, you'll be back with us with some updates on some of these questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Generator, generator, generator. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Reliable water.
I've told you before, it's fun. It really is fun. And so lucky to have this job.
Well, we're lucky to have you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Hank.
Thank you, thanks Hank.
All right, we're on to item number four, which is a resolution to award the bid. We went out for specs on insulation. And if you've been following along with our town board meetings, you know that we received a grant for a hundred thousand dollars as a clean energy community. We were the fourth township in New York State to be designated as such. And we, we desire to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars towards several projects that would work not only out in the community, but here with our campus. One of those projects is insulating this wonderfully inefficient building we call Town Hall. And maybe by coincidence, there's a panel missing from this drop ceiling, maybe not. But if you were to take that ladder and put it over here and go up that ladder and look towards Route nine, you would see daylight. And so one of the things that we're doing in trying to make this an energy efficient building and to be responsible with your tax dollars is we are using spray foam insulation. We went out to bid for that. We did receive a bid that we have a recommendation from our purchasing manager to award. We, we received a bid at the higher amount. We then negotiated with this vendor and we negotiated, I think, a very good reduction and something that hopefully will work for us. And that's the vendor's Advantage Insulation. And we're happy to say they're local as well. They have a very excellent reputation. So with that said, we have a resolution number twenty-four, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you, Sue. Dated April twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, authorizing the town of Red Hook to award a contract for insulation of Town Hall ceiling at the town of Red Hook Town Hall. And whereas we've identified this need, we've solicited public bids, reviewed the bid with a purchasing agent and he has recommended that we award this bid. And it is for the amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. And it is going to take this open daylight and make it, for those of you who are familiar with building performance, there'll be R fifty-six value that's associated with this insulation, so. And that is resolution number twenty-four and is alone.
Second.
Is there any discussion about this? If not.
Is he, when they were gonna, when they would do it?
Well.
Over this summer, I'm assuming.
Yep, and actually we'll likely schedule it, we'll have a very probably short pre-construction meeting. But just to go over timeframes and obviously there's the contract which will have to be signed between the vendor and, and the town, but over the weekend likely because of the
Oh, really?
mete oil, because of the nature of it's gonna be disruptive.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So I think that
Did they think they could do it over there?
I, I, yeah, we've discussed that with them, so we'll, we'll get it set and hopefully we'll, we'll have good results with that.
And we have to work on the heating system, the air conditioning system.
And that's, that's the next thing, is the HVAC system, yeah, from nineteen eighty-five circa. All right, we did not vote, all in favor.
I, I.
I thank you all very much. Okay, we have item number five on the agenda. Which is reorganization. We have a letter of interest for Ethics Board. And that is from Linda Greenblatt. And she writes, many of you already know Linda, but she's been a member of this community for forty seven years. She was a secondary teacher in the social studies department for the Red Hook Central School System for a mere thirty-six years. She's been retired now for eleven years and has been active and in many community groups in Red Hook and I believe a member of the Rotary. That is correct, yes, fellow Rotarian. Okay, very good. All right, so any thoughts about, she meets the eligibility requirements. They have requirements that may not be more than a certain amount of people in a political party. It may not be.
What are the party affiliations right now? Cause I thought, yeah.
They're two and two right now.
Right now it's two and two and isn't one registered then?
Yep, it cannot be more than three of one, more than three of one party.
Oh, okay. Okay, gotcha. I, I think we should wait until the other person who submitted a letter of interest is able to meet with the, with the board because I think she's back in May and they never met with her. I have a concern as somebody who's met with the Ethics Board to be reviewed for an ethical question I had. That when we have too many people on that type of board that are really, how do I put it, well invested in the community, I'll say. That it becomes a situation where you walk in and too many times they're likely to know the person that they're reviewing really well. You know, so I think it's difficult then for them to sometimes make a, an impartial decision. I'm just speaking from my experience meeting with them and I, I'm not criticizing their work. I think they are thoughtful and they're trying to do their jobs carefully. But because we already have four members there who are again very well invested, including I think two or three other members of the Rotary, I mean, just to say like from one small group. To have somebody like Linda join the group as opposed to the other person who submitted a letter, who's a fairly new person to the community. You know, I just worry about that balance and I realize that's not something that's in the charter for the Board of Ethics, but I think it's something we ought to consider when we're appointing new people.
Okay. I think those are, those are certainly good thoughts and it, it is of course for any members of our committees or boards, especially when they've identified that there may be a potential conflict or difficulty in making an objective decision for them to recuse or to sit out and vote. But I have no objection to waiting.
Be hard, be very difficult to make, to make a decision and we know if we have they, the, the committee as it is now is, is two Dems and two Republicans. And so, and, and, and actually they, they've all been on the board for some time.
So do we know Linda?
Nor have, they had much work to do. They have, they haven't had an issue before the board now for probably four years, five years maybe.
Well, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and let the
I wondered if Linda had, had a chance to meet.
To meet with, with the chair of the Ethics Committee. I, I don't know.
I know her well. I know, I know her well.
They know each other well and I'm sure they've discussed.
And she's, I know she's a Dem and, and, and that, and so yeah, she would, she would fit the need and, and she's well known in town. She was a teacher and she's a retired teacher.
So. Well, maybe, maybe the chair or the Ethics Board would like to give us some advice and maybe they have the opportunity to meet both of them.
I would, I would tell to She, she and the chair are both on Rotary, are both Rotarians.
I only think Sue Simon is also.
Yes, she is, yes. And I used to be.
So I'm sorry, what?
Gail's husband. I know, so that's four, you know, if Linda was on, that's four Rotarians and nothing against Rotary. I think it's like one of the most ethical and amazing groups, but.
Is Gail a member of Rotary?
That's what Sue McKen said.
No, no, so her husband is.
Or her husband, I'm sorry.
No, her husband isn't either.
Well, he was.
I know he was, but not free to resign.
I think he still is. Did he resign?
He hasn't been for a long time.
Oh, really?
Really?
Anyway.
He was when I was on.
Okay, well, let's, why don't we, why don't we gather more thoughts and more input from the Ethics Board?
There's, there's not an urgency of time.
Right.
For sure.
And then this, the other person who was interested, I think that she would be back in March, but maybe now it's May now.
In May. May. Well, she had a full break that started in February or March.
She should be back very soon.
For three months, so she'll be back in May.
Very soon.
Okay. Does that work for everyone?
I'll call me, I'll call Linda in the meantime.
Sure.
Okay.
Do you wanna reappoint everybody from the Ethics at once? Cause you still have the chair that hasn't been appointed and one of the members has gotten reappointed.
Have we let, have we let it slide? Well, well, they've considered themselves.
They're holdovers.
Oh, I know.
They've been there twice in the last couple of weeks.
Well, I guess what I would say is that if, if they know that there are two people who are interested, why don't we wait?
Yeah, someone, someone they want to change.
We'll keep them as holdovers, see if somebody may wanna
Yeah, I think people would be, better not make any decision now.
Step down, take a break. Right.
Let's have a little conversation and I'll appreciate that conversation with them.
Okay. Very good. Item number six on the agenda is an update on the app Amtrak fences. The Amtrak fence proposal. And I wanted to let you know that I attended a meeting yesterday with Congressman Bozo, Amtrak. Town elected officials from up and down the corridor where the proposal is. I think it was a very productive meeting. One of the pieces of good news that came out for our community and unfortunately only for our community of Tivoli is that they are no longer including fencing for the Tivoli waterfront area. They are going to wait and take a look at the public park as it's developed out to see how fencing and gates. to see how fencing and gates might fit into that proposal. So we have a stay, if you will, for quite some time. Um, and I think that's good news, it gives us all a chance to, um, see what they're proposing. You have a copy of the letter that I drafted, uh, yesterday, uh, in the afternoon. Um, basically outlining the thoughts that I shared with them. Uh, one in particular is that their application was really deficient as you saw the materials that I sent to you some time ago. It literally had arrows pointing to places and saying fence here. And then they had just sort of one, uh, a photo of the type of fencing that they prefer to use, which is an eight-foot fencing that cascades backward for security reasons. What did come out of this meeting was, um, additional knowledge that, um, we were under the impression, many of the communities, that the fencing proposal was to simply keep vehicles from going alongside. As you know, there are service roads alongside the tracks. Um, but the Amtrak officials did indicate that they are looking at also pedestrian safety there. But they've had a number of issues, number of incidents, uh, not just within this corridor. There have been seven, um, fatalities, uh, in the corridor since two thousand and fourteen. Um, Amtrak has taken over responsibility, if you did not already know this, from CSX, the owner of the rail line. So they are responsible for maintenance and care. Um, across the United States, uh, three people die every day, um, on the tracks. And so, yeah, it's hard to imagine, right? Um, because of incidents and so they are trying to take, um, whatever measures they can, um, to prevent that. Some good news that came out of the meeting is that, uh, Amtrak, uh, as well as, uh, the MTA by the end of the year, um, expect to have the positive control systems, which maybe you've heard about, which would have prevented some of these accidents that have made the headlines. They, uh, hope to have that completed and in place, uh, across the corridor. So hopefully that will help, um, the safety issue as well. So, um, I'd like to go out and, uh, send this, uh, letter to them and to write with you, thanking them for their time. And again, reiterating that, uh, when the time comes, we'd like to see something, um, a visual. In fact, I asked them, you know, that I thought it would be helpful to go to the communities and actually lay out with temporary fencing or whatever, where they plan to put this, how they intend to construct it. So that it doesn't in fact accomplish their goal, which is direct people to the crossings that are in these communities. And, uh, what that impact would be. Cause you know, this was a solicitation from Department of State to gather, uh, information to find out if it was consistent with our, uh, you know, the coastal policies of, you know, state. And I would, you know, just underscore that Red Hook has an adopted local waterfront revitalization plan. You know, we talk about being overregulated and sometimes we, we do feel that we are regulating a lot here. But the fact that we do have that adopted plan is the reason that we did get the consideration for Tivoli. Um, and the reason that we have, uh, more time, uh, and more input, so.
And any discussions come up about whether this is, um, a prelude to high-speed trains or is that why they?
Well, what's interesting is, you know.
More in the pedestrians?
Yeah, I didn't hear much about high-speed trains, but you know, during portions of this, they have, uh, the trains going a hundred and ten miles an hour. So when we talk about safety or when they were talking about safety, there was the recognition that by the time people hear the train coming, um, at those speeds, it's often too late for the folks, uh, on the, the tracks to adjust. And more importantly, um, the conductor, when they see something ahead, they don't know if they are, uh, going to clear whatever obstacle appears to be there in some cases. And so they often, um, are forced to do emergency braking. And that's when most of the derailments happen. It's actually because the train feels the need to, uh, come to an emergency stop and is not even to do so safely. So, um, yeah, that was, it was very educational, um, and I, uh, for the other communities, they've got, uh, they got the message, uh, Amtrak got the message in Tivoli alone. Uh, the petition was, uh, thirteen hundred and seventy-nine signatures to ask for, um, Amtrak to come and make a presentation. Um, so that they could explain, uh, exactly what they're proposing.
I really liked your letter, I think it's really well done, good job.
Yep.
Yes.
You know, they can't, they can't put high-speed re, uh, trains on the river that, because they, there are a lot of, uh, turn, uh, curves that are too sharp for the high-speed trains. So until we have, um, I can't imagine the technology that would allow a two-hundred mile an hour train to go around those curves. And if, if you're down in Tivoli very much, like I often am, if a train is coming from the north, it's, it is a hill that keeps it, that deadens the sound. And suddenly the train comes around the curve and it's like two hundred yards away and going full steam.
Okay, very good. Um, next item on the agenda is, uh, an update on the Red Park West project. And for those of you who were not here at the beginning, Anna and Michelle, um, I announced, uh, we were able to schedule a, uh, public input session. Uh, we would have liked to have a little more notice, but, um, if you could assist us in getting the word out there.
Right.
Uh, next Friday, May fourth at six-thirty, we have the availability of both Town Hall, the engineer, the red department and all that to be able to, uh, take in, um, your input on the, the project for folks at home who may not be aware. Um, again, I'll, I'll repeat myself at the risk of, of doing so. Um, back in two thousand and seven, the town acquired twenty-eight point eight acres on the west side of Linda Acres with the express purpose of developing it out for additional sports fields. Um, the, uh, plan for that property, uh, was conducted back between two thousand and nine. Uh, ultimately, uh, it was adopted back in two thousand and thirteen. A sort of campus master plan, if you will, engineers were hired. Um, I don't know, uh, how much, uh, of public outreach there, there was regarding this. And do know that it was, at least there was one article, right, Sarah? That was written in the, at, at the time, the free newspaper. Um, but, uh, clearly we would like to have as much, uh, public outreach on this and every issue that we are working on. Um, this, uh, diagram here, um, is from that, uh, rather lengthy set of plans.
That was never really promoted very much and there wasn't much discussion about it with the previous point.
Okay.
Um, okay, it, you know, it was done, it was preliminary and, and.
There were public hearings and there was a master plan adopted after the public hearing, sorry.
Did we?
Yes.
Cause I was on the board then, I didn't.
Yes.
Right, but so it's like a debatable question whether a public hearing equals public outreach, but you're saying, I know that there was a public hearing and for the Monroe proceeding and.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, we have endeavored for two and a half years and this is just an aside to do, you know, a better job of bringing government to people. Um, whether it's putting on screens or we spent a good deal of last year defending, um, trying to keep Panda in operation. Some of our other communities were, uh, considering pulling the plug on, on Panda. Um, when we do have this new website, um, we won't have to do archaic things like mail to you letters. And there's nothing wrong with mailing a letter to put you in the know. And we don't have a newspaper now like we did a few years ago, free newspaper that showed up in your mailbox. But you will have the ability to sign up for topics that you care about and we can push that to you, uh, almost instantly. So, uh, you'll be hopefully better informed and better engaged and, and you'll feel like you're more a part of the process. Um, until such time, you know, we'll endeavor to use the means that we have at our disposal to make sure that, uh, um, we can get the information to as many people as possible that care about those, those issues. Um, this was the plan at the time, um, that was adopted. And what's happening now, again, you know, just to update folks, is we, uh, went out. Um, this plan was adopted recognizing that construction wouldn't start until some type of funding was arranged. We've been able to get grant funding to, uh, have a field so that we can not only expand our recreation, but expand who can take part in our recreation. So there's a challenger field, um, that is being proposed. Um, if you look, uh, the, the, the middle field here, um, wiggling here, um, a challenger field for individuals with, uh, uh, special, special needs. Um, we've received grant funding, we've allocated, um, a bunch of other funding. We're now up to over a million dollars towards what we believe to be construction phase number one, which is the challenger field, uh, the infrastructure, um, the utility and a portion of parking. In the meantime, we also required a very small lot so that we can provide a safer parking plan. You can see what the, the parking design was back in this original, um, adopted campus plan. Um, and also to provide, um, you know, hopefully a better buffer for, uh, joining property owners. Um, the engineers are still working on what, uh, what we could get done with the funding that we have and what that might look like. And, um, not this iteration this afternoon, but, um, I can explain to you. And by next Friday, I think they hope to be in a position to be able to show you, um, what they, they believe phase one would look like and exactly what they estimate the cost would be. But, um, going back to this middle portion here, this is that, uh, baseball field that you saw in the, uh, adopted plan that we got now. And what, uh, has been considered, uh, from input from the recreation department is to have, uh, a multi-use, uh, field there for individuals with special needs. And it also can be used by Little League as well. Hence the, um, sort of rather odd shape, uh, there is that it could be used for not just, um, baseball for those folks, but other sports as well. That is the requirement, uh, under this grant that we, uh, have this built out by October thirty-first or thereabouts. It's federally funded Community Development Law Grant. About there you see, uh, potentially a full build-out of what ultimately could be, um, the parking for the area. Hopefully, uh, a more sane parking than was envisioned there with the original campus plan. Um, but note that they've already indicated that what would be a part of phase one would be, um, sort of this bottom half here, parking, not this northern part here. Most of this is gravel, by the way, the only, um, spots that would be paved would be right in this area here. And again, you'll see hopefully better graphics next Friday, um, for, uh, wheelchair accessible, um, parking spaces. Um, the pavilion is proposed to be, um, over here somewhere and we'll see more of that.
Isn't that sort of rectangle, like a little to the left over? Not that, yeah, like, or that kind of larger one, is that it?
Over here, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay, it's not very clearly delineated, I apologize, but I wanted to, to at least show you some of it. Um, so we'll, we'll get a better reduction of what's, um, you know, proposed for phase one and a better idea, uh, from the engineers, what those costs would be, what they did. And go through an exercise of the full build-out of the plan, the way it was proposed with the tweaks that would be necessary in order to accommodate this, uh, challenger field. Um, this area here, which, um, on the original campus plan, uh, these fields were called soccer, utility, something else. There were pre-names for these fields and basically what it was designed to be is, um, available for various sports. It was, uh.
Soccer, urban grass utility.
Urban, urban grass utility field. The reason this is on here still is that it's not anticipated that as part of phase one that these fields could be constructed. But material will be brought from the construction over here, over here. And we will, we might have, uh, well, we will have, we're upgrading and seeding. And just for background, if those of you who are not familiar with this property, this property has been manipulated now uh, several times over the last thirty-some-odd years. It was prepped for a very large subdivision by, uh, the previous owners, uh, Miglarelli and Leomi back in, I think it was the late eighties. Um, that never materialized. I know that at some point in time, I was not, you know, involved, uh, more recently, uh, the red department has, um, the town, um, has done some manipulation as well. In fact, did some wetland trade-offs here. Um, there was a area of, uh, federal wetlands here, um, that no longer, uh, exist. And a trade-off was made, uh, I think it was a three to one trade-off was made in this area.
We had to expand the other one for the, the amount of, of loss, we literally just transferred it.
Okay.
And when, when we bought the property, m- much of the topsoil had been, had been piled up with the intention of two, and the, from the previous owner was going to, going to remove it and sell it. But it was still stacked up there, so we spread it all out.
Spread it around, yeah. And there would be, um, under, under what's contemplated for phase one, what would happen here is again, just sort of grading and seeding here. Um, there was no expectation at this time that, you know, fields would be developed, uh, for this or that even, you know, uh, I think there was some discussion about, are we doing this for the soccer club? The soccer club is, um, set for, from what I understand, for the next decade. Um, but certainly the, this area here would, would be, uh, graded and seeded. Um, I think that's really it. So utilities, um, gravel parking, a little bit of pay to accommodate, uh, wheelchair accessibility. Obviously, we have, um, a, a pathway that they're working on because the, the folks need to get to this field and to this pavilion. So that's kind of where that is. I think we'll see a further iteration of that next Friday. And we'll be able to get more information and more importantly, more input from folks, especially those folks who were living around the, uh, the, uh, Red Park West. And, um, that's, that's all I really have for this at the moment. Sarah, did you wanna?
Um, well, one thing I just wanted to, to say that I, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, confuse lines of communications with the engineers. I know you're working with them closely, um, with the soccer field area, I'll call it, or the open use field or whatever it is. I know part of the idea is that by, because we'll have some earth that's moved to create the challenger field and we don't wanna just like leave it in piles for, because it's dangerous and whatever, um. I guess I wonder, I know the soc, existing soccer field, they've done a lot of investment with the drainage. And I wonder if we don't, we don't really know what we're gonna do with that area. But I wonder if the engineers can tell us, like, is, is the cheapest, best option to grade that area? If we're not sure we're gonna develop soccer fields, be, and if we were to develop soccer fields, is it a good idea to grade them now when we don't know if we're gonna need drainage there, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Get others, like, is there another thing we could do with that earth that's still like a good thing for the site? Like create a retaining, like, I know they're gonna need to do some retaining walls or they were thinking that they would need to do that. Or, you know, are there other things that we could do that still manage the earth in that parcel without needing trucking and the rest of it? You know, without, you know, just like, kind of what are the options there, especially cost-wise?
That would, that would, I think it would be easily done without creating the soccer fields and creating the soccer fields and moving all the earth over there and doing, there's a great deal of grading that would have to be done in this. And, and anyway, and if you're not gonna do that, you'd save a lot of, you know, from the original estimate, that would, that would save a lot of the cost.
Well, well, just to be clear, um, from the meeting, and I think all three of us were in that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Um, Sarah, I think you may have left at that point, but that, that question, I think, was asked, the question that you were asking. Um, and they said, keeping the material on site was the most affordable. And they said, keeping the material on-site was the most affordable solution.
Yeah, I'm just saying, on-site doesn't have to mean grading those portions of the fields if we're not a hundred percent sure we're doing it. You know, it'd be one thing if we're a hundred percent sure, we just wanna do a little grading now and then we'll afford the rest later. But if we're not even sure we're going to, then just is there another option? Then still like a useful option.
Well, let's ask them that at this thing, next Friday.
I'm quite sure there would be without re-grading the soccer field area at all now.
I just think it'd be good to know, you know?
We did it before.
Any other, any other thoughts? So letters will be going out to people.
Can I have a seat at all?
Well, it's not up, it's not up public air, but sure, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I'll just jump in because, and say, my name is Anna San Juan and I'm coming here wearing a few different hats. One is as a neighbor because my property actually is, you know, on shares property line. But really, that's not even, that's one aspect of what I am. I'm also, I'm a member of the Trails Committee and I've been part of a really lovely committee for four-plus years now that's been stewarding, part in the latter recent years. This property's been stewarded for some time, but in recent years, I've been privileged to be part of a small committee of people who are really invested in seeing the park used, letting the neighbors know. And a few years ago, I wrote a letter and walked it through the Aspen Walden area and also Fruit Bud Lane, just really encouraging people to know what an amazing asset this is. So I'm primarily coming from that hat because what's happened is I've become somewhat of a neighborhood ambassador or community ambassador by both being on the property and then the letter I sent and so forth. Neighbors will come by and users of the park will stop with me and they have questions. So I wanted to just share, if you don't, if I could, a few of the questions just to show you or demonstrate how broad some of these questions are. And some of the questions, and I'm sure they'll come up next Friday, which is for us to be in conversation about it. One of the primary questions, people are confused at first and they say, you know, why are we building more athletic fields? Are the demographics of the community changing? Was there a recreational assessment conducted? Are there results from that assessment? We think that the baseball clubs of Rhinebeck and Red Hook are merging so, because their numbers are decreasing, so how does that inform the use of this land? So there's like a bundle of questions that come up from a certain group of residents. Another bundle of questions is, was there a needs assessment of disabled residents? How many disabled residents of different types of disabilities will be able to use it? Was this data included in seeking the grant? What data is there that justifies the permanent impact of this construction on the property? So that's like another kind of cohort of people asking from that line. A third cohort are people who are saying, oh, well, who, you know, was this a shared, a diverse stakeholder group that came together to design the land? Were passive rec needs included in the assessment? I see a strong, or they would say, they see a strong focus on athletic fields, but what other? What about the naturalists, the joggers? Related to that cohort are people, some of the naturalists who've come out and say, wait a second, this is a beautiful green space and it's affordable and it's inexpensive. What, and the question is, are you maintaining any of that, are you not? The other body of questions is, why hasn't there been more public process more recently? Understanding that there was a public process in 2012 or so, but in recent years, in recent months? Is another body of questions, how do we know about it? Can we have input? How do we find out? That kind of thing. And then that would, I would say that that's a whole other conversation than the neighbors. And that's where I can pipe in and say that in the neighborhood group, the neighbors really feel like, why don't we know more about what possibly would be development? Noise, dust, length of construction, what permanently is going to happen on the property? A letter, a one-page letter that could have been distributed to the neighborhood two months ago saying, by the way, this is what's happening, heads up, could have resolved some of the, what's feeling like, a little bit of anxiety, a little bit of angst of just not knowing. Because what we don't know is often much worse than what we do know. And I'll tell you that as a member of the Trails Committee, my husband would tap me on the shoulder regularly and say, so what's happening? What's happening? I hear buzz in town that something's happening. And I would say to him, I really don't know. I don't know. So he wrote you, Robert, and then sent me the letter later, like, well, I better, you know, go and figure it out since you're not, you know, you don't have any information. So if I don't have information enough to be kind of served better as an ambassador and a communicator between lovely people, the residents, the neighbors and the Trails Committee and Rec Park Commission, I think we're missing something here. I've worked alongside of John Kuhn and Doug Struinski, who I know are leaders and, you know, have a lot, have invested years and years thinking through this and they're wonderful people. They're total stewards of this community, have, just can't say enough, good things about their care and their interest in creating a wholesome, wonderful, equitable, lovely scene for everybody. So I really think that there's a lovely opportunity here. And I think that what has been missing from my perspective is more of the public transparency and input. Knowing that this town is broad and there's a lot of wonderful people here, it's also a wonderful property, that I'm really hoping that the public process is more than just a show and tell on next week. You know, a week's notice isn't a lot of time. I don't think that's sufficient. And that there'd be more of a porousness and, you know, an opportunity to be told and informed, but also to inform and share. So that's what I'm just hoping out of this. I think this town is wonderful, the residents are wonderful, everybody involved in this is really special and great and there's just so much wonderful opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. And I hope a lot of your questions are answered next Friday and certainly appreciate, again, you know, there's been a two-and-a-half-year effort to try and reach the public. We do mailings on many issues that affect in particular neighborhoods and we've had neighborhood meetings. We do have a project here that's requiring a little tweaking from what was an adopted campus plan from years back. And, you know, from what I'm hearing and the letters that I got, folks felt that they were not necessarily included in that. And so, you know, I hope that at least here we are, maybe, you know, in the ninth inning of at least phase one of construction, that we can be better than that and, you know, have an opportunity for you to shape this going forward if you feel like you have not had that opportunity. And I'm glad you mentioned Trails because I've neglected, I try to remind folks that we are also working with Winnipeg Land Trust. We joined them in an application last year of the state. There is three hundred and some-odd acres adjoining this property that is going to be purchased and conserved. And we are working with them to connect the trail that will go through this property here and be part of the Village to Village Trail. So this is just a small aspect of the trail network and the recreational needs that we have. And part of the tweaking of the plan includes more passive recreation and also recreation for, as Jonathan said, our more mature adults. We've got a few little things that we'd like to add on there in the phase two or phase three if that should come to fruition, things like the botching board and so on and so forth. So we'll look forward to attempting to answer your questions and any other folks' questions next Friday.
So just to clarify, Robert, these are not my questions?
Yeah.
What I'm doing is coming and representing eighteen, twenty-five people who have emailed me or stopped or knocked on my door. They're not really my questions.
Well, that's fine.
Just to say that it's not my personal investment and I'm here to represent the Trails Committee and the neighbors.
Yeah, we did receive correspondence from answering about eight people or stuff. So yes, we recognize that it's from people who not only are in the neighborhood, but people who appreciate that parcel of land. And as somebody who actually identified that parcel of land back in 2006 as a wonderful recreational parcel and recommended it to the rec department, I can tell you, I understand, you know, and as somebody who spent most of his life working for, his adult life, working in Preserve Women's Space and Farm, and I understand what, you know, what you feel and how special that place is to you. It's got incredible views. It's a beauty, even if it is manipulated and has been manipulated all over the years. And there's something very natural and wonderful about that place, so I recognize that. Thank you. All right. So that's Friday, May 4th, 6:30 here at Town Hall. We'll put that up on the website as well. We just got confirmation of that this afternoon and whatever you want.
A week from Friday, right?
A week from Friday, yes, May 4th. And whatever you can do to spread the word and we'll spread the word. We already have a mailing, that's going out, so.
We may want to do like a, one of those emails we kinda do to like Town Hall constituents and include like Trails Committee, CAC, like some of the groups that would normally
Share, yeah.
be interested in this so that, you know, because I think, one of the things Anna's saying is that the Trails Committee, which really is partially responsible for maintaining what exists there right now, the trail hasn't really been included, at least that's what a member of the Trails Committee is saying. And I know from sitting in as your liaison in the past, there really wasn't a lot of discussion of Rec Park West, you know, so it'd be good to include them now and end it up future.
Doesn't John sit in on those?
He does, yeah, yeah.
He doesn't and there was no discussion of it?
I do think that there is a, you know, potential, I don't wanna speak for John, but you know, these are, this phase is a sports field development phase, you know, so the sense that it would be a Trails Committee issue, I think is maybe not there. So I think part of what Anna's saying is an opportunity that we could think about and maybe start to engage with on Friday is the idea of some kind of stakeholder group or protocol where this project as a whole, not just phase one, but everything is shared with a wider group. Not that like everybody, all those people need to be in the room every time we talk about the details, but that like there's some kind of list that, you know, gets a notification when like a major development is happening, you know, so that it's the.
Is public land, everybody should feel, feel a, a thing.
But so that there's some kind of, specifically, you know, CAC, Trails, those kind of groups besides the rec commission really are the ones that we want to be involved in letting us know, like, how could we use a parcel that also includes a wetland? You know, like, they will have ideas that might not be, those perspectives aren't, don't exist on the rec commission. You know, that's the reason we have all three of those bodies, you know. So there must be a way that we could share that information with those groups and include them in some way without impinging on what the rec commission's duty is as far as sports fields, you know what I'm saying, and just rec in general, like, I think we should think about that. Because that's what Anna, one of the things you're saying is that Trails Committee members aren't even able to be ambassadors for this project because they don't even know and, you know.
Yeah, and it's an oddity that none of the neighbors would have any information. So for one, you know.
You know, I should perhaps speak up. I can tell you more of the history, having been here. I wasn't initially involved, it was purchased before I was on the board, but I was very much involved in what was going on in the board at that time. And it's, this goes back to 04 and 05 when the conversations started. And this conversation started about a need for permanent soccer fields because they were where they are now, but they were very limited. My grandchildren were going there and they were playing swarm ball at that time. Now they're adults, but nonetheless, that land was bought with that intent in mind is to provide the soccer fields. And in the meantime, the need for soccer fields has gradually diminished because the soccer fields, as you know, are very well-developed out there on the Greg lands. And so, and nor did, nor, soon after we bought it, we were hit with '07. '07 made the dollar worth nothing. So we were, we had a financially stressful period here. And now it's less financially stressed. It's time possibly to move forward. We have a plan and it's something that I think we really, the public should understand and we should understand and work on behalf of the public as to what we do now. And what counts now is the need now, not what it was almost ten years ago and this was all starting, it was over ten years ago.
My point is just to say that, that a lot of the kind of questions or perceived anxiety or angst, if any of that is being communicated, can really be alleviated through communication. That's it. Because there's, this is a gorgeous piece of property. It was always bought with amazing intent and things change. But it is an oddity that there's not more information. I mean, if I'm sitting on the Trails Committee and I'm sitting alongside of John Kuhn, who is a partner and a colleague, and my husband can't get information and none of the neighbors can.
Well, let me respond to that because I don't want people to have the sense that we possess information that the public is not aware of because I think that's an act here.
Okay.
And we are getting this information as it's being developed. What I have here today, I saw for the very first time, let me finish please, three hours ago, four hours ago. My point is, we don't know yet what the tweak, we hired this engineer to tweak the plan to accommodate a challenger field and to accommodate the lot to provide safer parking and buffer. We don't have anything back yet from them. We're looking at, you know, very early iteration of what that tweaking would look like to change in a ready adopted plan. We don't know if we're even gonna proceed with the project yet. We need to get some idea of what the scope, the cost, what we have allocated is. So we definitely wanna share with you and everyone, and we, if you've been watching these meetings, we've been covering this topic frequently and extensively. We do wanna share what we have, something that we can share with you and hopefully we'll have something substantive, you know, next Friday.
So, Robert, in January, you, I, you and others knew that building would start in March, right? So in January, even though you didn't know exactly what type of, what kind of development, there was some sense that there was a development time between March and October, which I've come to learn of since. So that just being an example, it's like the people are not crazy because they're saying, hey, we need more information. In January, there could have been some kind of outreach that said, heads up, we don't have all the details. But you should expect this because the hearing by word of mouth creates a lot more discomfort than being told in advance and included. That's my own, that's the only point.
I appreciate that. And again, when we have more information, when we know that we desire to go forward with a project and what that project might look like, we, and again, it's just a relative tweaking to what was already adopted. And I appreciate you all letting me know that you felt that there wasn't enough public outreach back in 2013 when this plan was adopted. So now, you know, I feel a higher threshold that we can meet and hopefully we'll meet for you for next Friday, so. I don't know if that satisfies.
Can I just make an observation really quick, which is just as we've been going through the planning for the new website? One of the things that came out as we looked at the website analytics is that the number one place, what do you think the number one page is that people go to for the town website? So you may have a guess.
Front page.
Hmm?
Front page.
Front page. It's the contact page. And that says to me that people don't use our website to find information themselves. They're finding, they're going there to get somebody's email address or phone number to reach out and say something, right? Like, I need this, I need that, what's the deal on this, what's the deal on that? So I just think like there is a perceived need, certainly that our website firm is like noticing as they're looking at the analytics. as they're looking at the analytics where people don't really go to the subpages. And it's partially because as we all know and we've discussed a lot, our website's not that great and it's not that user friendly, you know? So we are hoping in the future that it'll be better. But I think it's probably a good idea for us to just acknowledge and just start to think about like, then some ways that is also the way I think the town committees and boards sometimes work, where like we're, we kind of rely on the public to ask us things. And I don't think there is a lot of like awareness of like, you know, there's no like newsletter or that kind of thing that goes out regularly, you know, that kind of stuff. It's just something to think about, you know, as we're
Not to be repetitive, but that is the reason why, um, you know, we've allocated, I've allocated in the budget money to revamp the website so that we don't have this kind of situation where people feel that they're not um, you know, up to speed on, on something that's happening. And we're doing ours, our rudimentary, but what we can now with the technology that we have available to us to um, uh, keep people up to date. We wouldn't know necessarily who to reach out to. For example, we have somebody in the back there who doesn't live anywhere near this Rec Park West who uh, apparently uses it, you know, quite, quite often. So again, we wouldn't know that. There was nothing I could have done to have notified Michelle of this, you know, and know that she would be somebody to notify. But when we get this communications tool up and running, everybody will have the ability to sign off and be notified immediately on topics that you care about. And I hope when that happens that, um, it will be a big improvements with, with communication.
Let's just
Have you ever seen, have you ever seen this old plan that we had? That's probably eight or nine, maybe even ten years old.
Yeah, I did. I saw that when I first moved into our property. And then I was very generously invited to the engineering meeting about two weeks ago or so. And that was really lovely because then I
Those are all public meetings. She couldn't come anymore.
Yeah, you were there. And what was really great about it is that I could come out of that meeting and be like, okay, there's some, you know, there's all these wonderful things to talk about and to share. So that was really helpful.
This, this, this one, this one we gave up on, this, this plan.
So the thing, the thing about the
It had too many glitches in it.
The website updates though is just that people who sign up for rec updates are only going to get those when there's an update from the rec department. So what I'm saying is just like there will have to be somewhat of a culture shift of all the departments. If they want to share information, they're going to in some way have to arrange to put that out, which we don't do right now.
We'll have a school that'll talk about projects. And they could find out about projects when their road is being paved or when their speed limit sign is being changed or when their open space parcel is about to be developed as was apparently um, communicated in a way that maybe didn't, uh, didn't satisfy folks. So um, that plan was adopted here in two thousand thirteen, just so you know. That was, I was not a part of that board, but, but you were, so.
Yeah, we had, we had the plan and then I remember doing, doing it and the whole thing. But, but nothing, nothing came of it. I, I thought it was, I thought it was back then.
Okay, well, it was, it was adopted by that Town Hall.
Yeah.
Um, we need to move on, I'm sorry, but hopefully Friday
Is your executive session?
Will answer some of those questions to you and others. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience. All right, um, we have committee and board reports. And given the timeframe, I'm wondering if we can um, do our best to summarize. Bill, we have the assessor's report. If you'd be kind enough to report.
The assessor's office has completed the two thousand eighteen tentative assessment roll. And we published uh, May first in accordance for the state law. There'll be a link on the town's website or you may go to Dutchess County Real Property. Grievance Day will be held on May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. And additional information regarding place and time will be posted on the town's website and also published in the newspaper. So the assessor is busy getting ready for the tentative assessment roll to be published and Grievance Day and continues to work on renewal exemptions and uh, on the new sales in the town. And they have a very favorable report this month.
I'll just once again reiterate how happy I am personally the, the recruit of Cheryl to that office. I think she's doing a great job. I think folks really appreciate the work that she's doing and the way in which she treats our residents and explains things to them. And it's been very helpful to my office and other offices here. Harry, we have a few reports for you if you wouldn't mind.
All right, I have, I have a, they're not in, they're not in the order that they are in the, in the, in the, in the other list. But I'll, I'll report on them as I, as I see it. And the Economic Development Committee is, is the first one in my stack.
Yeah.
How about that? Taking that approach. Um, and they've, they've been very interested in the sewer system that, that is moving forward in the village. But, but the Economic Development Committee does meet, meet in the village. And they have, and of course, that has a great impact on the economy in townwide as that, as that moves forward. Um, and they've, we actually had a meeting with, we had, they had a meeting today and, and had quite a bit of conversation about, about the, the town and the town, and town agendas and whatever that they, they feel they're impacted by. Um, I got the working group report in the middle of these.
Harry, do the reports.
Huh?
Do the reports.
I'm trying to find them.
I'm going to do the recommission. Why don't I do one?
You're going to do the recommission?
Bill, do you want to do the next one?
Okay.
The Building and Zoning Department for the month of April issued twenty-four permits. They had nineteen inspections. They issued eight certificate, certificates of occupancy. And the revenue for the month is nine thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars collected.
Okay. They're very busy in the building department these days.
Who skipped over the play or do I go back?
Yeah, they're, they're all like in weird order. So I was trying to go in the order like Perry and I have intermunicipal task force next. Anyway.
The intermunicipal task force has been meeting and reviewing local law C for two thousand eighteen and revisions to the law, which has now been presented to the town board and scheduled for a public hearing on March eighth.
May.
May.
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll do that.
Planning board report?
Okay, go ahead, Ann.
Um, so the planning board for April had worked on diff, uh, eight different applications. Um, or there was an application to construct a commercial multi-use building. So that's a site plan uh, in the TND Commercial Core District. Also to um, renovate and expand an existing ten-room hotel. That's a special permit and a site plan. Um, construct new residence in Upper Red Hook so that involves a certificate of appropriateness. Another special use permit for a multifamily dwelling on um, Martha Beller Lane. An amended site plan for the stewards in town here. That wants to do in addition to their existing building. And that's also, that's another one in the TND Commercial Center. A lot line alteration uh, in the Ag Business District. A, an accessory apartment, special permit application also in the Ag Business District. And um, a, um, application actually to demolish an existing barn and then construct a new or cottage with an attached garage. Um, that's, that's a new, new um, project. And there was a specialty, or public hearing on a site plan and special permit for residential to mixed-use property change in the Institutional Zoning District.
Okay. Um, Harry, would you like to do purchasing?
Yeah, if I can find it.
Okay.
I have it here for now.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, um, all right, the first thing on the list, there were, there were um, purchase orders in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is, which is rather, rather high for this month. Uh, one of the things that's on, that's on the agenda, purchasing, is what we just talked about, the challenger field and the, and the RFP for the foam that, that we also talked about tonight. Uh, we, we purchased a number of, of the, the equipment for maintaining the Red Church Cemetery. That's, that's been on the agenda, but that, that, that list is complete. And I believe the order is out for those things. And we have installed the security cameras that are hithering on around this building now.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a, May for a busy month.
Okay. Thanks, um, Sarah, would you like to summarize recreation report?
Yeah, sure. I think there's three things. One is that um, the rest of the repairs slash upgrades to the tennis courts should be done by late May. So everybody who's eager to be playing tennis, the color coatings, the lining and um, net posts and things will all be installed by late May. It's good news. Um, the rec department was able to hire a new director for our summer camp program. And so that person is Kathy Dunn. I believe she's a Rhinebeck resident who is a school teacher. So they have really high hopes for her. She seems like a really great person to have on the job and has already worked with them, talking about like protocols and things like that. And the last thing is just to keep your eyes open. The playground group is starting to get the word out about the new playground project. So they should be passing around flyers and things like that um, shortly. And that's, that's exciting. So that's all I've got. There's a whole report, I believe it gets posted on the website. I don't know. See if anyone wants the full nitty gritty, but that's the, that's the highlight.
Okay. Very good. Harry, would you like to report on the EDC?
I didn't, is that what I just called?
He did that one.
Oh, you did that one?
Yeah.
Oh, that was fast.
Although I would like to just add that um, there's a section here about the marketing and the new videos that they've been doing. And I think they really are great.
Yeah, they are.
So it's good to see that businesses are, um, you know, reporting an uptick in business.
Yeah, they're out on social media, they're out on social media and it's very attractive and really need to watch.
And they're very nicely done, yeah.
Do we have a way to get them out to a wider order, audience would be sort of my question. If we're all watching videos about our community and go, wow, look how great we are, obviously they're already making
They've actually been working, working on and expanding it now, but piece by piece for, for a few years.
Okay.
So, uh, they know, they make
Website and whatever.
On, on web marketing. So I think, I'm sure that's part of it is getting, obviously Christine and I watching a video about J and Js.
Right.
Has limited
Right.
helpfulness as far as
Impact, right.
But I think the good thing is then J and Js, the way social media works, you know, is then if some random person Googles like luncheon Red Hook and J and Js comes up and they look at their page on Facebook, then that video is part of that whole package that they're seeing. So it's not just the hours of business and whatever else. It's, you know, something interactive and fun and attractive.
They put a lot of effort into a website going back a few years and, and have updated it regularly and have still not totally solved the problem of people, people querying on Red Hook and getting
Going to Brooklyn?
And, and mixing Brooklyn up with us.
Okay.
But anyway, that, that has been somewhat successful.
Harry, you'll work on the Brooklyn, Brooklyn problem, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, do we have um, any
I have tree commission.
Tree commission, thank you.
Uh, tree commission members went up to celebrate with a luncheon in Colony and um, got the twelve-year stickers for our Tree City signs. They repaired a Tree City sign. Um, they installed the twelve-year stickers so everybody can pat themselves on the back for looking at a nice Tree City USA community, twelve years running. Um, holes are being dug for the thirteen new trees um, that will be installed this Friday, right? April twenty-seventh, weather permitting, I assume. Yeah, okay. So that's going to be really nice to see. And those trees are, have already arrived. Um, their annuals program with Mill Road School is happening with Eleanor Frye revisiting the first and third grades. And there are already celebrations, which people, again, people watching at home will already have passed, but for everybody here, it's going on this Saturday. There's details on the web and you've had press releases out and so, and hopefully people will see as they pass by and maybe stop in. So, um, that'll be, what time does it start like?
That's ten to
Yeah, ten, ten to two, okay. Great, free seedlings and all kinds of good stuff. I think that's, that's the highlights.
Okay, um, and to summarize, we had some correspondence, I think it was already referenced. Folks who had questions about the Rec Park West. The Economic Development Committee, who I met with this morning, um, also reiterated their desire as they had in the past to uh, work on streamlining the planning approval process here on the town of Red Hook. And we shared some potential ideas on how we might institute a, a small sort of task force uh, group of folks, including our planner and um, some agents or engineers or architects that routinely come in front of the boards that have a lot of experience on um, applications and maybe some suggestions. Um, I shared with them also some uh, work that's been done by PACE, uh, land use for various municipalities, so they can take a look at that work and see if that uh, uh, you know, institute some type of ideas, you know, here locally. Um, and I am seeing uh, no other business in front of us except to go into returning client, which I'll do in a minute. But I do want to say thank you to everybody and Linda's here, especially Linda, um, for cleanup day. We had cleanup day, it was successful, a cleanup day. Last Saturday, we had um, uh, probably between thirty-five and forty individuals of all sizes, shapes and ages helping us um, in the town. And we greatly appreciate it. And I think if you drive the roads, while they're not all perfect, it looks really terrific out there. And Linda, especially
How much garbage was collected?
Oh gosh, I didn't, I didn't measure the garbage, but you know, did get some, as always, some interesting tales of what was discovered, especially alongside our ditches, which, you know, collect water. But we want to thank all the volunteers, the Cub Scouts and everyone else. And, and Linda, you especially, you've been doing it, I think, ten years in a row as have some of us up here. So um, thank you very much. And I thank, thanks to all of you who uh, donated your time to make Red Hook look
After the weekend, that whole series of orange garbage bags appeared along nine G.
That's right. And so that's part of the Adopt a Highway program?
Yeah.
So that's why you see we focus on the more local roads? Because there are people who signed up for that?
Oh, did he? I know it was somebody else that signed up. I don't know who.
Uh, the Red Hook Rotting Gun Club did their section, if you want to know. And Red Hook Alumni also has a section. They're a different organization. So we thank them and I guess, you know, that, that would be a deficiency on my part not to thank them regularly because they do it at a different time, but they do a terrific job. So um, thank you all for, for that. Um, is there any public comment? If not, thank you Linda. If not, um, I would make a motion that we go into returning client.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for joining us tonight. All in favor, aye.